Calling this meeting to order, this is a regular business meeting of the Redmond City Council, held on Tuesday, September 16th, 2025, commencing at 7 o'clock PM. I will call role, starting with Council President Kritzler.
Here.
Councilmember Fields.
Here.
Councilmember Forsythe.
Here.
Excuse me, Vice President Forsythe, sorry about that. Councilmember Slahudin.
Here.
Councilmember Melissa Stewart. Councilmember Nueva Camina.
Here.
And Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
The first item on the month is a proclamation for National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is observed annually from September 15th through October 15th to recognize, honor, and celebrate the culture, history, and countless contributions of Americans whose ancestry originates from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, Central America, and South America. And whereas the roots of this observance date back to 1968, when it began as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon B. Johnson, and was later expanded to a month-long celebration in 1988, under President Ronald Reagan, recognizing the independence anniversaries of several Latin American countries, as well as the vibrant heritage and influence of Hispanic Americans across the United States. And whereas the 2025 national theme is collective heritage honoring the past, inspiring the future, this theme emphasizes celebrating the rich cultural traditions of Hispanic heritage while looking forward to the future and the contributions of future generations. And whereas the Hispanic and Latino community represents a powerful force of leadership, resilience, creativity, and service, enriching our neighborhoods, fueling our local economy, educating our youth, protecting our health and safety, and contributing to every aspect of community life. And whereas we recognize and celebrate the deep historical legacies and contemporary achievements of Hispanic Americans, from artists and entrepreneurs to educators, innovators, and public servants who have helped build and continue to elevate the promise of opportunity and justice for all. And whereas as a city that values diversity, equity, and inclusion, we remain committed to fostering a community where the voices of all residents are heard, where heritage is respected, and where the full participation and leadership of Hispanic and Latino individuals are supported and encouraged across every sector. And now therefore I, Angela Bernie, Mayor of the City of Redmond, Washington, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2025, as National Hispanic Heritage Month. And I'm going to invite Mariana Martinez, Executive Director of Centro Cultural Mexicano, to accept the proclamation. Welcome. We're going to get a picture and then again, ask for you to say a few words for us.
Of course.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much, everyone. Nice to virtually meet you, Mariana Martinez. I'm the Executive Director at Centro Cultural Mexicano. I'd like to also recognize here one of my board members, Monica Trujillo, who has been since its inception of our nonprofit. So Centro Cultural Mexicano, really quickly, we're a nonprofit organization located right down the road. So we're your neighbors. We're focused on serving the Latino Hispanic community, and we've done it for about seven years now. Our programs, our services are geared toward serving the Latino community within King County, but anyone who comes through our doors truly gets served. Our programs are really tailored to serve, they're fully bilingual in Spanish and culturally relevant to ensure that we meet the needs of our communities. And I cannot be more thankful that you're making space to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. It's important to open these spaces and to ensure that, at this point, we're not, without addressing the elephant in the room right now, we're not living in different, we're living in different times, and it's more important now, more than ever, to unify, to be our allies, right? To be in spaces, to raise awareness, to celebrate what's important with us and for us. And I think Hispanic Heritage Month is a perfect opportunity. We do a lot of things. The biggest pillar, or one of the biggest pillars in our work is our events. It's important for us to build community, to build these spaces, outlets, to, not only for our community to celebrate what's important to us, but also for you to join and to be part of these events, to learn about what's important, build community, and learn about who's your neighbor. Our programs are, again, like I mentioned, geared toward serving our communities, very much so in the way that the communities need. We're down, you know, we're on the ground, understanding what the community needs. We offer classes, English classes, from English classes to coaching, financial coaching, to support to small businesses. But we've also expanded to a lot more, providing rent assistance, providing PMI elimination and down payment assistance, which we know housing is really important. It makes a difference in people's and families, not for this generation, for future generations to come. And we're also expanding the work that we're doing to research. Oftentimes, our communities are underrepresented, and when they are represented, they're not inclusive necessarily. So we're looking to expand that because it's important to know who's here and what the needs of the community are. And then we also have part of, an important part of the pillar of our work is our youth. I dare to say that oftentimes, they're a second thought. They're not necessarily a disenfranchised community, but oftentimes, not at the table, not at table, not at the table where decision-making processes are happening. And these are, these are our youth. They're going to live the ramifications of the decisions that we make. So for us, that's really important, and it's represented in the spaces that we offer. We have a makerspace dedicated to all kinds of machines, a place for innovation, 3D printing, et cetera, having all this equipment to those with low-income resources, or not enough resources, and have a place to imagine. We also have our board representation for youth, that's how important this is for us. So I welcome you, visit us, come visit us, and tell youth to come and do that. But I think this is the last pillar, one of the most important pillars as well. It's being in places where, you know, where we are being heard. Me, as a representative of our community, it's important to hear what's happening. We're down, we're on the ground, we're understanding what's happening. But it's also important to bring it to you, to represent our communities, to lift our voices, because oftentimes, again, we're not, we're not in places where we need to be heard. So this is why I'm here. This is driven by passion, not just because I myself am Mexican, born in Mexico, immigrant to the United States, but also because it's our communities. Many people think Redmond, are there immigrants in Redmond? Yes, we're here, and we're your neighbors. So this is a great opportunity to celebrate us and to be our allies. So thank you so much for this opportunity, and thank you so much for council, and look forward to seeing you in all of our events coming up day after day. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate you accepting this proclamation for the month, and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is items from the audience. I have the sign-in sheet for members of the public to speak tonight. When I read your name, you'll come up to the podium and have three minutes to address the council. Councilmembers generally will not respond to comments or questions directly at the meeting. Members of the public are welcome to email the council anytime at mayorcouncil@redmond.gov. The views stated by members of the public do not represent the opinions of the City of Redmond. And as a reminder, RCW 4217A555 prohibits any public comment during the council meeting in support or opposition of ballot propositions, measures, or candidates. All comments must pertain to the City of Redmond business as indicated on the sign-in sheet. There are 12 people signed up to speak tonight in person, and no one has signed up to speak remotely. So I'll start with about the first four names, and then we'll just keep going through. So we'll start with Juliette Dutcher, Adam Koch, Joanna Bandler, and then Wolf Adriatico.
Hello. My name is Juliette Dutcher. This is the first time I'm speaking at any type of event like this, so excuse me if I'm nervous. So I am a lead cook at Firefly at a Meta building down the street from you guys. And I started working at Meta when there was only a few buildings on that Willow Road. So I've been around for almost seven years with that company. And I am at a point right now where I've been through the development of the Bellevue community, of X community. And it's changed a lot throughout the seven years I've been with the company. Despite the Meta growth in the East Side, myself, I cannot afford procedures to get surgeries on my hands and my knees through the years that I've been working for this company and throughout my life. Despite the growth in the East Side, I cannot, I'm sorry, I can't afford to buy a home that my wife and I have tried to get because of what I've gone through, through that company, through the years. For the reasons for more, I've been a part of efforts by my coworkers and myself to organize a union at that work of Meta. First and foremost, also, I would like to thank every one of you guys for signing the letters and sending it to Meta and to Lavish for your support, to tell them to remain neutral, and it has not worked out in our favor. We're still having problems with Meta and Lavish on stopping us from going forward and scaring mainly the immigrants that work with us, the Ukrainians and Asian community. And it's been difficult. First, also, I'm sorry. It's been hard. Just knowing that there are politicians, this is new for me. I'm 50, and I've never been to one of these. Myself and the remaining.
In conclusion, your time is up. Do you have a final statement, final sentence?
I just want to say thank you again. And if you guys could show more support for myself and my community at work, that would be great. Thank you.
Adam Koch, Joanna Bandler, Wolf Adriatico, and then Chester Anderson.
Hi, my name is Adam Cook. I'm a prep cook at Lavish Roots for Meta. And I work in the Bellevue Spring District. The reason that I decided to join in the effort to unionize at Lavish is because I've seen firsthand managers not respecting employees. I was bullied by a coworker for multiple months. Nothing was ever done about this coworker. And when something was finally done, all they did was move him to another building where he could go and bully other people. I've seen coworkers be sexually harassed by a manager in front of other managers, and still nothing was done about that. It took maybe six months of complaining and asking them to do something for them to finally do an investigation into that manager. And because back in February, one-third of our coworkers, nearly 100 people, were laid off. And when we went back to work after the layoffs, the managers just acted like nothing ever happened. There was no, this is how we're going to move forward. There was no help or anything. It was just, we're doing the same workload, we're doing more workload actually, because now there's less people, and we're feeding the same, if not more, amount of guests. I also want to thank you guys so much for the letter that you signed. But the letter hasn't stopped Lavish or Meta from pushing back against our unionizing efforts. On August 15th, Lavish held an anti-union meeting, an all-hands meeting. That was, the first probably 15 minutes was a mandatory meeting to talk about the benefits that they had already had, and then they turned it into a non-mandatory meeting to talk about union. They told us that if there is a vote, that they want us to vote no. And they believe that we should not sign a union card. Managers have been kicking us out of buildings. I myself have been told that I am no longer allowed in one of the other cafes because I was talking to my coworkers about how it's been at work, about the union, and I don't think that that's right. We're standing up to them almost every day, staying late almost every single day, and beginning before work, 5:00 AM, before ships are open.
In conclusion, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Joanna Bandler.
Point of order, they've lost sound online.
All right, let's take recess for a moment till we can get our sound back up online. Thank you, hang on, hang on, Joanna.
Is the sound working online? Test, test. Can you test that microphone?
Should be working now, how's it look?
Okay. Great. Thank you for your patience. Thank you for letting me know. Well, wait, he will get us back going again, we're in a recess. Johanna Bandler, then Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Erin Hamilton, and Joanna's already up here, thank you.
Perfect. My name is Johanna, and I have worked as a front-of-house lead and as a prep cook for Lavish Roots at Meta since October of 2023. And I came here tonight first to thank you again for showing us support for our effort to organize a union among the 200 employees at Lavish Roots who work in Meta's East Side and Soto Cafeterias. But I also came to talk about some of the fear that my coworkers have been feeling over the last couple of weeks. I have Ukrainian coworkers who are recent refugees from the Russian invasion in their country, and they've told me that the workload in the dishroom is so bad that they've considered returning home to their war-torn country, even in the midst of continuing bomb strikes, drone strikes. But they've also said that they fear being deported if it is discovered that they've signed a union card or took part in the organizing. I have Senegalese friends and coworkers who work two jobs to afford the high cost of living here because they have family in Senegal that rely on their paychecks. But they also know how difficult it is for Muslim immigrants to get hired in the service industry, especially without fluent English. They're fighting for higher wages and basic rights, but they worry every day that the company will retaliate. Many of my coworkers share their fears of ICE agents choosing who to detain based on profiling. Over and over again, I hear my coworkers saying they're afraid that if they stand out in a fight against the company, that they will be fired, or worse, that it will lead to their immigration status being jeopardized, and the company is allowing them to feel this way. The fear that people are fearing, feeling right now is greater because of the moment that we're living in. It's greater because of the government's attack on immigrants, and the fear is greater because we work at Meta and because we see videos of Mark Zuckerberg and Donald Trump enjoying dinner together. We are standing up to get today despite these fears. And we thank you for the letter that you signed to help us bring confidence to our coworkers. But because Lavish and Meta are actively campaigning against us and have not chosen to be neutral, we still need your help. Our employee handbook specifies our right to engage in protected collective activity, but last week, while my coworkers were standing in the garage to talk with other coworkers, the managers surveilled our activities, stopped us from engaging in this protected activity, and finally, had Meta Security tell us that we did not have a right to be there. They said, quote, "It is Meta's policy that union activity cannot take place on Meta property." "We are asking you to use your platform in city council and as elected leaders to support us until we win the security and the rights we deserve." "We're out there every day talking to our coworkers, and we need your help elevating our message." Thank you so much for your time.
Next is Wolf Adriatico, then Chester Anderson, then Erin Hamilton, and then Faith.
Point of order again, it keeps going in and out, so we may need to take.
One second.
Sorry.
For some reason, the sound keeps cutting out.
For our online folks, is it just the podium?
Yeah, do we know if it's the community or just?
They can hear council members, it's the podium.
A second, I'm just going to leave the menu and come back, meeting come back on. It should be working now, keep an eye on it if it's.
All right, thank you.
Hello. I'm here to talk to you again about the Old Firehouse, specifically the stakeholder group of which there are 21 members and only 17 teens. As a reminder of what stakeholder means, that's one who is involved in or affected by a course of action. I don't know if you know the full title of the firehouse, but it's Old Firehouse Teen Center? Crazy concept. Instead, the majority of seats are filled by city staff and commissioners. The group's facilitator, Darcy Edmonds of Stepherson and Associates, states they set a limit of 20 members, which the city exceeded. The city, in this case, being whoever within the subcommittee or mayor's office who actually approved the list, which nobody has given a straight answer of who, not any of the subcommittee members, Kritzler, Fields, or Nueva Camina, and not Parks Director Lauren Hamilton, not Lindsay Falkenberg, and not Stepherson Associates. It seems that everyone is pointing the finger at each other, and the public can't get a single straight answer of who's responsible for this. The last, the first stakeholder meeting was last week, I believe, and Councilor Nueva Camina could not be bothered to attend. Kritzler attended in person, and Fields attended online. It was, we were promised a sort of dialogue where the stakeholders could voice their opinions and have a say, you know, which was the point of being brought on. But it seems that instead, it's a one-sided receiving of information by the city, and questions seem to be looked down upon and silenced. We asked, multiple of us asked to allow recording of the meetings, but we were told that that is not possible because some people answered a question on the survey, which we filled out prior to it, that they do not want the meetings to be open to the public, which, opinion here? That's stupid. A process that is affecting the people of, a process affecting the public should not be done behind closed doors when you are bringing people who are supposed to represent parts of their community in to do it. It should not be something that the community they are representing cannot see. And in conclusion, I asked everyone to please come to the focus groups on the 22nd of September and 24th, RCMV and RCC. Thank you.
Next is Chester Anderson, then Erin Hamilton, then Faith, then Elena, and I can't, Elena R., and then Shambra, I can't read your last name either.
You know, everything earlier with Hispanic Heritage Month really reminded me of the fiasco during Pride Month, when Erin was misgendered and dismissed, right after President Kritzler, I believe, declared Pride Month and how much we love queer people, except until they're unpalatable. And this all makes me think about the firehouse and really just the impact it had. It doesn't matter ultimately what the beliefs of the council are, what the council's goal was in closing the firehouse. I understand there were very convenient safety concerns. But ultimately, the impact of the firehouse is closing down a vital third space and public resource to teens who need it most during a very scary time for those teens who need it most during the strip back of DEI, during all of the transphobic policies under the Trump administration. You know, we see ICE becoming more prevalent in our communities. And instead of investing in the space that would mean so much to literally save teens' lives, instead, we decide to close it down. And I am the person who quite literally knows the most about the firehouse. I went there ever since it reopened back in COVID. I was going there almost every single day for years. I am the one person, I am not exaggerating, I'm probably one of the few people, one of two people, who understands most how the firehouse works. And I was part of the group that fought to create the stakeholder group because I really wanted this information to be known for the teens who have a stake in this building to be heard. And instead, some very convenient assumptions were made. It was assumed I was 20 years old. I was told I could not be on the group because I lived outside of Redmond, even though I'm a resident. And then after I was told, oh, actually, no, those aren't required, it was still very convenient that I was not allowed to be on the group. And it's not a matter of just, I'm mad because I was excluded. I just, I find it really upsetting and really backwards that it's, that this knowledge now is only going to be allowed, is, I'm only able to share this with the focus groups, but the focus groups, in all honesty, are not going to be very effective. It's not the stakeholder group that's influencing the decisions more. And so, like, I feel like that there's, that lack of information is, it's very troubling because it's been very clear so far that the city has been pushing an agenda to get rid of the firehouse in some way. And even now, when the question is renovating or rebuilding, even now, it still feels like the city is pushing towards an agenda, and that really upsets me. It feels like the investment is not in our people, it's in new investors, it's in corporations, it's in more apartments. I am so sick of everything. I, I just, I'm so sick of being embarrassed to live in Redmond. Thank you.
Next is Erin Hamilton, then Faith, then Elena R., then Shambra, then Ling.
Oh, boy. Well, after that last meeting, I should probably call the boiler. I need some personal security going on here. So let's see, as soon as the beep went on, the cops started to move. That's, that's interesting. In less time than it took for the people before me to do their in-conclusion, the cops were already standing behind me and to the side of me. That's weird. And conveniently, the video feed was cut out. I get it, probably don't want to show law enforcement taking down a trans woman and arresting her. I get that, don't want to show that. So back in, if you remember back in July 1st, you treated the Nazi guy with a lot more respect than you did with me in the last meeting, where he broke the rules, refused to stop talking, didn't even cut his microphone off immediately, was continually to go off, never cut the video feed. Where were the cops? Making sure the structural stability of that wall was protected at all times. That's weird, right? But, you know, back in June, everything was different. You guys actually wanted to hear what actually is going on in this community with the LGBTQ+. But that's right, the mayor wasn't here. The room was full of a bunch of gay people, and you guys passed a resolution that was written on toilet paper for the chief of police and the mayor to go take to the bathroom. So, yeah, we've got some problems. I don't like how I was treated, especially with the example of the Nazi guy. So I tried to be nice, I tried to take care of this behind closed doors with each individual one of you. I tried to take care of this behind closed doors with each individual one of you, and you all just say the same thing. I spoke to the chief about rebuilding this blah, 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 blah. What's come of it? Absolutely nothing. So now you force my hand to be more public, and I'm getting retaliation from that and intimidation, which isn't going to work because, quite frankly, I'm way more intimidating than anybody in this room, especially the mayor, especially the cops behind me. So I'm literally the only person who's trying to do something about it, but if you guys just want to talk to the LGBTQ people on how to treat trans people, that's a problem. They're not really going to help you very much. That's what we're here for. But, you know, you can talk to everybody else but me, the only person who's actually wanting to sit at the table, because there's no other trans woman that's going to want to sit next to a cop, sit across to the table from a cop, have a conversation with a cop, and yet, here I am. But you know what? I actually really want to say positive things about the Redmond Police Department, but you're not letting me do it.
Next is Faith, and then Elena R., and then Shambra, I think, and then Ling Chen.
If you're calling everyone else by their full name, please call me by my full name. My name is Faith 2386. That's what I've chosen my name to be. I hope you.
I apologize, 2386, thank you.
I just want to echo what Erin has said. The behavior that I've seen from this council has been absolutely ghoulish, and I am extremely disappointed to be in the same state as this council. I don't have much else to say.
Next is Elena R., and then, I think it's Shambra, then Ling Chen, then David Morton.
Hello, I apologize for my bad handwriting. So, dear Redmond City Council members, in September and October of 2022, Redmond was plagued in wildfire smoke. Our children could not play outside, and we had to stay indoors desperately looking for a breath of fresh air. Our region used to be known for its greenery and rain, and people moved here for recreation. Before it's too late, we need to make that vision true again. Our proposal today is to incentivize electric bike usage in the city. Electric bikes offer a quick reduction in cars on the road and consequently in greenhouse gases we collectively emit, improve health and mental well-being of the population, and make the roads safer for everyone to use. Getting e-bikes on the road is the quickest method we can employ to do our part in stopping global warming. And with the hills in Redmond, residents will be more likely to use an electric bike to get around for routine errands. As a start, we ask that Redmond City Council authorize a pilot program of 250 e-bikes distributed to experienced riders who will be asked to participate in a survey at the end of the trial period of three months and allow a GPS device to monitor length of travel, places and times that the e-bikes was utilized. Once the pilot program ends, bicycles can be distributed to those riders with a discount if they wish, or released to the general public with that same discount. We already know how successful such rebate programs are. In May 2022, the city of Denver began offering residents a rebate of $400 of an e-bike or $900 of an e-cargo bike, plus an additional $800 for low-income residents. The program quickly ran out of money and had to be funded several more times. In fact, it regularly releases vouchers for people to apply for, and these vouchers go quickly. The program's funding source is a 25 cents sales tax. Only brick-and-mortar bike shops, which provide onsite sales, service, and repairs can become vendors. Batteries used in e-bikes have to be certified to meet city standards. The Denver program was so successful that Colorado took it statewide. Under legislation approved by state lawmakers in May 23, residents at any income level could get a $450 tax rebate toward an e-bike purchase beginning in the spring of 2024. The legislation also doesn't restrict combining the rebate with other local e-bike incentives like Denver's. In February of this year, the city and county of Denver said that e-bikes purchased through the program have eliminated nearly 170,000 miles of vehicle travel each week. According to the Rocky Mountain Institute, an environmental nonprofit, the Denver program was estimated to have cut 2,040 metric tons of carbon dioxide in 2022 and saved nearly $1 million in avoided fuel and electricity costs. It seems that the Denver or Colorado model is solid and worth considering in Redmond. Washington State itself has an instant rebate program called We-Bike. Can I finish?
In conclusion, you, like, one more sentence? No, in conclusion, the three minutes is up.
Well, yeah, so We-Bike, funded by Climate Commitment Act, invested $5 million statewide. Those vouchers went out in 12 days.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Next is Shambra, and then Ling Chen.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and good afternoon, councilmen. Sorry, I think I've, I'm in support of Elena here for that e-bike program, and we've been kind of tracking this program for the last couple of years. I know that, I met with many of your folks here, just to be able to have a conversation to see whether there is enough interest and we should pursue that. Yes, we feel that, no, there is a need for that, and as Elena was pointing out, that now, you know, the Denver successful program has been replicated here also in the state of Washington. There was about $5 million adopted, and they gave it to that program, which was just gone in about less than 10 days. The problem, the point is that, yes, the program was there, it was like put a couple hundred, couple thousand bikes were allocated. We tried to find out how many bikes were allocated for Redmond. We really wanted to see that, now, hey, yes, you got $5 million for the state, and how many actually came towards Redmond. Couple of emails, phone calls and stuff, we realized that it was about less than 10 bikes, 10 people got the benefit of that program. So what we really propose is that, I think the city should take up something as a pilot program for about 200 bikes or so. We want to really go back and then give the best to it, ensure that now we can also participate with other local, you know, King County or other programs that are there, we can actually pair up with them, so that we can go back and get the data to see how well that can, that program can be used for Redmond. I definitely feel that now this is an, should be a part of the infrastructure program that you guys want to take. If you can do that, that'll be awesome. Again, thank you so much.
Next is Ling Chen, then David Morton, then Linda Seltzer.
Good evening, Mrs. Mayor and the members of the council. My name is Ling Chen, L-I-N-G-C-H-E-N. I live in Sammamish. I work here in Redmond, and my parents also live in Redmond. I am here to speak about the planned closure of the Redmond Fred Meyer. Two weeks ago, I started a change.org petition to save this store. As of today, we have collected 348 signatures and many heartfelt comments from residents. These numbers, these numbers represent real families in our community who rely on this store for groceries, prescriptions, and the daily essentials. The Redmond location is not just important for Redmond, it also serves many Sammamish residents who depend on it as their closest full-service store. This strong response shows that our community cares deeply and wants action. Kroger, the parent company of Fred Meyer, is one of the largest grocery chains in the nation, yet even a company of this size is closing stores in Washington because theft, crime, and the rising costs of doing business make them unprofitable. If a giant like Kroger finds it unsustainable to operate here, small and local businesses stand even less chance to survive. I have already spoken with Sammamish city leadership about this issue, and I received a supportive response along with interest in working with Redmond to find solutions. I was also encouraged to see Seattle officials directly engage with Kroger regarding the Lake City Fred Meyer closure, which brought greater transparency to the situation. I believe Redmond and Sammamish should take a similar approach to open dialogue with Kroger and the property owner, and to explore solutions such as improved lease terms, targeted tax relief or incentives, and a stronger security support. I respectfully urge Redmond to join Sammamish in advocating for residents and pressing for practical solutions that could keep this essential store open. This is not just about one store, it's about protecting the vitality of our local economy and the daily lives of our residents. If even Kroger can't survive here, what message does that send to even smaller business in our community? Thank you, Mrs. Mayor and the members of the council, for your time and the leadership.
Next is David Morton, then Linda Seltzer.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. I'm David Morton. I'd like to talk about Redmond's commitment to environmental sustainability and the crucial need to accelerate efforts to combat climate change. Redmond has long prided itself on being a leader in technology and innovation, and it's time to apply that same spirit to Redmond's environmental challenges. Great work has already been done through the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan. The urgency of the climate crisis demands that we move faster and more decisively. The city's goal of achieving community-wide carbon neutrality by 2050 is commendable, and the science is clear, we must act now to ensure a livable future for all generations. I urge the council to focus on implementing policies that will have the most significant impact on reducing Redmond's carbon footprint. This includes accelerating the transition to a carbon-free energy grid, incentivizing the adoption of electric vehicles and e-bikes, and promoting green building practices for new and existing structures. It needs to be easier and more affordable for residents and businesses to make sustainable choices. This might be accomplished through enhanced rebate programs for electric heat pumps, solar panel installations, and home energy retrofits. Redmond's tech-driven economy can be leveraged to develop and scale these solutions right here in Redmond. Redmond can lead by example and turn innovative ideas into tangible, impactful changes. In addition, Redmond could take a more aggressive stance on preserving its natural systems. As the city continues to grow, its green spaces, tree canopy, wetlands, and drinking water aquifer are under threat. These natural assets are beautiful and vital for the community's health by providing clean air and water and by mitigating the effects of climate change. I ask the council to prioritize the protection of these critical resources in all future development plans. Let's make sure that Redmond's green infrastructure is as much of a priority as its roads and buildings, because green infrastructure plays an important role in the city's long-term health and resilience. Make Redmond a national model for climate action. With bold leadership and a continued commitment to community partnership, Redmond can be prosperous, resilient, and environmentally sustainable for years to come. Thank you.
Next is Linda Seltzer.
As a retired engineer, I am commenting on tonight's parking report. When I worked at AT&amp;T Labs, I not only worked on R&amp;D with algorithms, but I also worked on human factors and subjective and objective user testing. I was a member of the AT&amp;T User Experience Forum, which met monthly to learn about and discuss user experience issues around the entire company. I was a member of the Safety Committee that monitored the safety of a facility of 5,000 people, so I'm speaking from professional experience. I live across the street from part of downtown sector covered in this report. The suggestion of replacing unlimited parking with more limited spaces and more paid permit spaces would cause chaos and severe problems for people in my neighborhood. The report considers maps, commuting, and demographics. Additional emphasis needs to be given to use cases, the categories of residents and their needs. This differs along different streets and different parts of downtown and the areas nearby. Meetings are planned with property owners, but what about the people with disabilities and the single moms with little kids? When do we get to have meetings? For example, near Redmond Elementary and the preschool, there are people coming to take their children to and from school, and parents might at times enter the school. The report shows that 14.6% of the residents downtown are age 65 and older. It does not report on the number of people of any age who have an ADA disability classification, and there isn't any way to count all the people without an ADA classification but with limiting medical conditions. Some senior citizens and people with disabilities in apartment complexes have relatives or paid caregivers coming and going, and various parking needs, apartment complex might not have space for visitor parking. The report doesn't include the problems with people with ADA and non-ADA disabilities unable to use underground or multi-story parking garages. The report doesn't include the difficulty of a single mother or even two parents with small children trying to use off-street parking or parking that might be five or six blocks away. The report fails to consider the use case of people needing to bring bags of groceries or even heavier items from the car to their apartments. They fail to consider how this intersects with disabilities or the presence of small children. Is a senior citizen supposed to walk a few blocks with each bag of groceries there and back? I personally once purchased sneakers for a young single mom.
Any conclusion?
So there's the issue of people not being able to afford shoes, the highest usage at night.
Time is up, any conclusion?
Because people need overnight parking.
Thank you.
Okay.
That is, no one else signed up to speak remotely, and items from the audience is now closed. Our next item of business is the consent agenda, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved? They're second. Second? It's been moved and seconded. Are there any items to be pulled on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll read some things into the record. Consent item 14, resolution number 1610, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, adopting a revised summary plan description for the City of Redmond Self-Inured Medical Plan. Consent item 15, ordinance number 3227, an ordinance of the City of Redmond, Washington, amending Redmond Municipal Code, or IMC, subsection 504080F, to implement a one-time increase to the business license model minimum threshold for out-of-city businesses with adjustments to the threshold every four years, based on cumulative inflation as required by RCW 3590, municipal business licensing providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Con, ordinance number, excuse me, consent item number 16, ordinance number 3228, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Redmond, Washington, approving a petition by Microsoft Corporation to dissolve Redmond Community Facilities District number 2014-01, making findings in support of the dissolution, providing for the remaining balance to be repaid to Microsoft Corporation, repealing chapter 3.95 of the Redmond Municipal Code, providing for severability, and establishing an effective date. This will be a roll call vote, since we have someone online, starting with Council President Kritzer.
Aye.
Beels, aye.
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 And that passes 7-0. Thank you all very much. And just a note, we are the only city in the state that has community facilities district. We still have one, but it's pretty exciting that we have completed the work of our first community facilities district in the state. So very exciting. And thank you to the board members of that for keeping things on track. Very much appreciated. The next item on our agenda is a staff report on the urban centers parking management existing conditions report. Carol Helen, Director of Planning and Community Development, will introduce this item.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, city council. Tonight's staff report will provide an update on the parking study that was completed this year on Redmond's three urban centers. We'll share an overview of the data, which gives us a clearer picture of how We'll share an overview of the data, which gives us a clearer picture of how much parking exists both on-street and off-street, where and when it is being used, and how it is currently being managed by both the public and private sectors. Looking ahead, a study session is tentatively scheduled for February, where council and staff can explore broader system changes such as on-street paid parking or the creation of Parking Enterprise Fund. Although not the main purpose of our staff report this evening, we will outline proposed near-term operational changes to improve parking management as Light Rail service connects Redmond to Seattle. And these changes have been reviewed and refined by a cross-departmental core team. Where council approval is required, proposals will come forward by the departments who are responsible for the oversight of those various different programs. And tonight's focus really is simply to introduce these changes and the reasoning behind them, but we would welcome feedback that you would like us to include to help shape that future presentation. Staff presenting this evening include Seraphie Allen, who is online with us, Michael Hints, Transportation Planning and Engineering Manager, and Caroline Chapman, Senior Planner. I also wanted to note that the Redmond Police Department has hired Jacob Lester as the city's new parking program manager. This is a new position approved in the current budget, and Jacob will lead the implementation and oversight of parking enforcement going forward. And he's actually here, as opposed to just observing. Thank you for waving. And so he's here listening in this evening and paying attention. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Caroline Chapman to walk us through the staff report.
Thank you, Carol. Just take one minute here, get set up. Let's see if I am able to share this. Okay. Well, thank you very much. As Carol mentioned, I'm Caroline Chapman. Here tonight is a senior planner, and I am very excited to be sharing with you some of the research that we've done on a parking study across our three urban centers, and really looking at how better management can help us meet the city's goals around access, economic, and sustainability goals. I'm going to start with our long-term vision before sharing findings from the existing conditions report that was included in your packet and is available online. And then we'll look at downtown, Overlake, and Marymore Village in turn before shifting to what's going on on the private side of parking and begin to talk about our proposed operational changes. So just to set us in context, Redmond 2050 really lays out our goals of the city to be a connected, livable, and sustainable community. And parking really does play a role in that vision. I've included one of the policies that is part of the Transportation Chapter in Redmond 2050. But really, parking has a role in helping us reach our homes, businesses, and transit without undermining walking, biking, or our other environmental goals. And our adopted policies do call for tools like shared parking, wayfinding, and demand-based strategies to help us get to a more urban future. What you'll see tonight is that the challenge isn't about supply. We already have plenty of parking across downtown, across all of our urban centers, but the challenge is really around efficient use of the parking that we do have. And our goal in the Planning Department is really to get the right spaces serving the right people at the right time. That means short-term parking is available at the curb for visitors, reliable long-term options are available for residents and employees, and that the system that supports walking, biking, and transit still exists. Parking management is a part of our transition into a more urban, multimodal neighborhood, and we should expect to see more changes in this world as we continue to grow and change and urbanize. So, a very dry slide with a lot of information, but what's going on here is we found that across the three urban centers, we have nearly 21,000 off-street spaces and about 1,400 on-street parking spaces. Even at peak, peak occupancy, which happens at different times across the centers, half of these stalls sit empty, so about 12,000 spaces. On-street is, of course, where the city has the most influence and control, and downtown has substantially more inventory than our neighborhoods in Overlake and Marymore Village. Most of the parking that we have here is private, which limits what the city can directly manage. What I'm calling out here is that kind of the industry standard for efficiency is around 85% occupancy. Below that, you have parking spaces to spare. Above that, that's an indication that maybe more management strategies are needed to get the turnover that you might be looking for. Currently, downtown is the only location within the city where the city has direct parking management, and that is our two-hour time limits, Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. And we offer a parking, a monthly parking permit for folks who would like to stay on the street for longer than two hours. That is a $50 a month permit. We have a limited supply of those. They are regularly sold out, and that $50 a month has not been updated since 2009 when this parking program started. Currently, Overlake and Marymore Village don't have any time limits or permit options available to residents and visitors in those neighborhoods. So looking more in depth at each of our centers, starting with downtown, and there's a number of maps in the existing conditions report that are pretty illuminating, so sorry, we just have this one today, but we can dive into it in more detail if you'd like. But what we are seeing in downtown is that our on-street parking peaks at 70% full, off-street peaks at 51%. So that leaves about 8,500 stalls across the district that are available at that peak time. Only 15% of blocks are in downtown or above that 85% threshold, and I have them circled here in blue. The one that I'll start with are those streets around Anderson Park. That might be what our previous community member was speaking to. These are a lot of residential streets that are seeing a lot of folks who might be avoiding time limits in other areas, parking on these streets. The other hotspot outside of the residential streets around Anderson Park are Redmond Town Center, and Redmond Town Center streets are privately owned and managed, so we're meeting with them and chatting with them, but we are not able to change any of their time limits. But it's an interesting case study to be able to compare what's going on there to the rest of the city where we have time restrictions, and I'll get into that in a moment. So, and like I mentioned, Redmond, or downtown, does have those time limits and monthly permits. Overlake is a very different story. On-street spaces are scarce and nearly full, peaking at 83%. You can see them clustered around Estera Park Development. Off-street spaces are following the trend of being underutilized. They peak around, they sit around a third full. And one thing that I would like to note with Overlake is there's a big gray area here in the middle, and that's Microsoft Campus. We did not include them in our survey. We can estimate they have about 6,000 off-street spaces. That would double the inventory in Overlake, and Microsoft does have a very robust parking management for their visitors and employees who come through there. The other thing that I would like to point out, these on-street spaces are clustered around Estera Park and this new development, and that may be a trend we'll continue to see as large lots get redeveloped. We might see more on-street parking come into our inventory. There are two public off-street lots in Overlake as well serving transit. Neither are owned or operated by the city, but they are there, and again, no time limits or management in Overlake. Marymore Village is our smallest of our urban centers, and both on- and off-street parking peak at around 50% occupancy. The New Sound Transit Garage is going to, or has added, 1,400 off-street parking spaces. Unfortunately, that was not online at the time of our study, but we will be anticipating getting information from Sound Transit on that occupancy as Light Rail gets moving. So some streets, like Northeast 67th Court, reach 85% occupancy by midday, and we see cars will stay there all day long, as they are currently allowed to. We should expect to see more of these streets redeveloping and putting more on-street spaces. When that happens, there's a picture later, I think it's in front of Spectra Apartments. It's a really beautiful example of what some of the redevelopment is doing in these urban So if that's what's happening on the public side and across our centers, we also took a look at what's going on along the private lots and garages. Again, this is where the most inventory and capacity is, so it's insightful to take a look at what's going on across different land uses, as well as what some of our downtown employees have said that they need. So I'll go through that. The first place I'd like to start is around our multifamily residential buildings. This is the first time that the city has been able, that I am aware of, that the city has been able to survey parking in these buildings in any substantial way. It is not all of the buildings, but it does give us a good picture of what's going on. And residential garages in downtown are less than half-full. We get progressively fuller, more full as we go through. And there could be a number of reasons for this. Cost is most likely a factor. The average cost for a monthly garage permit is around $150 at these buildings compared to $50 for an on-street permit. And demographics are also shifting, and this is pretty eye-opening to me. I think this is what the planners had said was going to happen, but we are seeing it, that 21% of downtown residents don't even own a car, and so they don't need that parking that's there. And we're seeing that trend continue as households begin to lean into being car-light or car-free in Redmond. So looking at different land uses, there's not a lot of difference across these that we can call out, but it is just interesting for us to be looking at how our office occupancy compares to retail, and this is something that staff will be able to use when we're talking about shared parking resources and programs. But I think it mostly just points to, again, there is capacity in our off-street spaces. What's bucking that trend is public off-street garages, and we are approaching, getting closer to capacity on those. And one way to think about this is that these public garages are well-known, easy-to-use, and mostly free for the public, which could account for their higher-than-average utilization. But again, looking forward to seeing how Marymore Village Station will be serving the public going forward. Those 77 spaces listed there are really public trail spaces. And then looking more closely at what's going on in the immediate quarter-mile around Light Rail, so this is about a five-minute walk, you can think of it that way. And while we haven't yet seen the full impacts of Light Rail, this gives us a good snapshot of what's happening now and the current status that we have. Downtown is unique because those, again, those streets to the south are Redmond Town Center. So when we look at just the Redmond Town Center streets, that occupancy is 81%. When you look just across the way at the streets that the city manages, it goes from 81% to 59% occupancy. And I only bring that up to show kind of a very clear before and after, or the impacts of kind of basic parking management strategies. Let's see. And then Sound Transit, just for you to be aware, and maybe you know this, will be doing a before-and-after survey of the on-street spaces in this quarter-mile. And so when Light Rail connects to Seattle, they will come back out and redo these counts and see how occupancy has changed at that time and offer mitigation strategies if needed. We also sent a questionnaire to downtown businesses as part of this study, and what we had been hearing from a lot of employees of downtown is that they don't have a place to park their car for their full shift. So we wanted to ask where they're currently parking, and about half park right now in public lots or with an on-street permit. The rest use private garages or unpermitted curb space, which might mean they're moving their car every two hours or finding streets that do not have time limits. Most spend less than $5 a day and are comfortable walking up to five minutes, or again, about a quarter-mile, to get to their place of business. Finally, we asked about preferences for parking, hoping to get some insights on how we can potentially support this population. And what we heard from them is that they would prioritize affordable, long-term options over more costly but conveniently located spaces. Private owners are also adapting to our more urban environment, and these are just some trends that we're beginning to see across multiple sites. Offering shared parking after hours, like between a bank and a restaurant, or a restaurant and retail shop, when they get together and decide that they can share the same pool of parking for their patrons, because they have different peak times. We already see folks starting to make these connections and agreements on their own, and I expect there will be more of that in the future. Private lots in higher-demand areas are also beginning to charge for parking. This includes hourly parking rates for visitors or leasing parking to groups of users like construction workers and employees on a month-to-month basis. And we're also seeing some newer mixed-use garages are using variable pricing to influence behavior, so they'll make free or low-cost or validate parking for their customers and patrons while charging a higher rate for people who are not looking to visit but are just looking for a place to park as a way to keep those spaces that they want prioritized for their own patrons. And then we're also seeing the private side beginning to do more enforcement, like towing and ticketing. And these approaches are growing, and will kind of continue on a site-by-site basis. So now that I've kind of touched on what the private side is doing and all the current utilization in the urban centers, I'd like to talk about the operational changes that city staff has been discussing. Again, these are more near-term operational changes focused on efficiency, not building a new supply, and some of these will require council action before implementation can occur. But tonight is really, like Carol mentioned, just an introduction to these topics, and I will point out when one of our colleagues will be bringing something forward on this. And here's in front of, I guess it was the piper, this is the Marymore Development that brought new on-street parking to the district as well as a protected bike lane. So these are the four areas of operational changes that we're talking about, and so I'll go into each in more detail, but for now, I want to explain a little of the rationale or at least share that here. But expanding the area of where our on-street time limits are, making some changes and expanding our monthly on-street parking options, doing a shared parking pilot, and providing some wayfinding. Again, not, there's a thousand different ways that we can go and talk about parking, and some of those bigger issues we'll be talking about are bigger changes. It can be discussed at a study session in February. So I hope you're not disappointed that these are the four that we're really getting into. But in Overlake and Marymore, we are proposing expanding the two-hour time limits to the streets and adding some extended-by-permit streets to these neighborhoods. This would help us ensure that visitors have short-term access while employees and residents have some structured alternatives. And one thing that we saw with both downtown and Marymore is that cars were parking and staying in that spot, and again, approaching or exceeding that 85%. So in order for us to do on-street time limits to Overlake and Marymore Village, Public Works brought forward a code change to council, and this is the relevant section here highlighted in red, that allows for us to impose time limits, but before any changes are But before any changes are implemented, communication would go out to residents and the broader community about the changes, and on-street signage would go up. So this is, this is not going to be something where we just rip off the Band-Aid and there's two-hour time limits now. There would be a very thoughtful approach to how we do that. And police will need to update their management contract with the vendor Diamond Parking. And so before that happens and before these time limits are imposed, police will be coming forward to council, I believe in November, to discuss those changes. And then the other place that we'd be looking to expand the two-hour time limits are those streets around Anderson Park. These are mostly residential streets. They are close or within walking distance to the Light Rail station and are above the 85% occupancy. What we are proposing for these six or so streets would be two-hour time limits that were open to be extended by permit. So talking about the monthly on-street permits, these, we have 283 a month that regularly sell out. And there is a waitlist for our permits, which are allowed on these dotted streets that you see on the downtown parking map. And what we would like to do is expand where permits are allowed to these other streets here in red. And if we were to do that, well, first, these streets were selected, they are outside of the quarter-mile of Light Rail. They have lower than 70% occupancy, or they are residential-only streets. So that was something that staff had discussed as criteria to help us determine where these would be. And when we sell permits, we would not be selling permits to the equivalent of 100% of those spaces. We would sell to 85% occupancy. So if a street had 10 parking spaces, we would sell eight permits for that. If we were to expand to these streets, we would add about 100 additional parking permits to our supply just in downtown. And so, let's see. We've also talked, I mentioned this, the price has not been updated for 16 years. And so if we look at the cost of inflation as well as market rates, we are proposing to raise the price of the permits, likely to be about $100 a month. This is a jump. And so one thing that we are talking with Diamond Parking is if we can offer, how we can offer, a low-income or a lower-priced permit for folks. The other thing that we would like to do, making sure that the permits are getting where they are needed most, is prioritizing employees and residents who do not have an off-street parking option. So the details of that are being worked out, but allowing those employees to be able to purchase a permit before we open it up to the broader public or to residents who have an off-street parking option. So, let's see. Police is going to bring that forward to council for the price increase and, as well as a more refined list of streets later this year. And I just want to make note of the pricing. Right now, the $50 a month permit covers about 50% of the cost of enforcement in downtown. Expanding the number of permits we sell, I don't think it is turning a revenue, but it will be a part of a cost-recovery effort and would be able to cover more of that cost of enforcement that Diamond is doing. We are also partnering right now with Move Redmond to do a shared parking pilot program focused first on the downtown. And what's great is with all the data that we have, we've been able to see where there is excess capacity and when it's next to a place that has high demand. And trying to bring those two groups together, or at least speaking with the parking managers, to share with them the demand that is there and hopefully encourage them to join a shared parking pilot. We've had two meetings thus far with property owners and managers, and I just got the date for the next one today. It's going to be October 14. We'll be meeting at the Together Center to try and get some folks signed up to be a part of the shared parking pilot and bringing people who need parking together with people who have parking and trying to make it a turnkey resource for folks. And finally is wayfinding. And this is really about helping people find what we already have. And there's little tweaks, like adding off-street parking to our downtown parking map, those garages that are open for the public to use. And working with Streets and Public Works on expanding and improving signage around downtown. This is an area we can continue to build on and look into more high-tech solutions. But this is just, we're starting with some of the basic low-hanging fruit first. And then mentioning that study session coming up in February. If there are specific questions from council that you'd like staff to prepare for that, we'd welcome it. But otherwise, that really concludes the report on the existing conditions of parking in the urban centers.
Great. Thank you so much for that. That was very detailed. I'm going to go, I'm just going to run down the row and ask everyone if they have anything, anything that they want to add to Caroline. Council President Kritzer, do you have anything you would like to add?
Thank you so much for this detailed presentation, as well as the really deep study and reporting. This is great to be able to go from some of the vision to the data, to the roadmap of how we get to where we're hoping to go, especially from our comp plan vision. There are quite a few management actions, as you mentioned, that will be a mixture. You kind of ran us through some that will come to us and some that are already within kind of operational capacity. I do think, as you flagged, even if it is within the capacity for you all to do that as a management action, ultimately, we'll hear feedback from the public on it. So being able to have at least a presentation on those ones would be really helpful and be able to get council feedback on the rollout. What might be helpful, just because I was trying to track all this and in reading, looking through the materials and report of kind of what are the different actions, maybe if there was like a table that showed the different actions, the projected time when it will either come to council or be implemented, I think would just be helpful for us to keep track of and know, and then, and then the like, what kind of council engagement there will be, so on the ones that aren't, that aren't our actual decisions in this case. But yeah, I think that that's kind of my biggest thing, because I do think there's a lot of good ideas here. As you mentioned, we probably don't want to roll them out all at once, and we want to be thoughtful about how we communicate about these. And then I think one of the other things that I would be interested in is how we will measure the effectiveness over time of some of these strategies, since they are supposed to be able to create more parking access for our residents and for people who are visiting. So would love to be able to kind of see the plan going forward after they're implemented. I do think in particular, I had called this out when I saw it in the original plan, that that change in the Anderson Park neighborhood is going to be, we'll hear feedback on that in particular. We already heard it tonight from one resident in that area, especially because of the school nearby and because there's some both affordable housing nearby, senior housing. And so I think we should just be thoughtful about how we roll that out and also how we track any sort of equity impacts. I guess I would ask you, if maybe you could speak to how you thought about some of the equity impacts on any of the places where currently people are able to access free parking and, or unlimited free parking versus where they will need to move to a monthly permit if they want to use it as their parking solution?
Yeah, and we are working on those equity issues, and they have been raised. And I would say there was a comment around ADA access, and that's something that we're talking about with our curb management study. There's a lot of moving parts and people working together. And I would definitely say that equity and ADA access has been a frequent conversation that we're having in making sure that we are leaving, having as many options available to folks as we can provide.
Great, thank you. And then I would just put as a pin of one additional thing that I think I brought up before, but I would love us to revisit the policy around the named street being the limit on the two-hour parking and whether it could be more, whether you're in the actual same space, since that seems like that's been really confusing to our residents. Say if they park on one part of Leary Way, they move their car within the two hours to a different part, but didn't realize that if it's on Leary Way, they're going to get ticketed, as they say, "I moved to a new spot." I think we, unless we're going to do really clear signage on that, we might want to revisit if there's a different way that we want to set that policy, if we're going to be moving overall throughout our city to this two-hour restriction in more places. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fields.
Thanks. Just, I think council president covered quite a bit there. But I would just emphasize that employees need a place to park. There are already many costs to being employed. And your sensitivity around, you know, providing opportunities for employees to park, not have to race the ticket giver in a two-hour timeframe to get their car free. So that is where I would emphasize my thoughts and effort.
Thank you. Council Vice President.
Thank you. I'm definitely interested to hear more about the expansion on the monthly street that's proposed in this presentation. And very much appreciate the priorities in permitting that you touched on and the commenter earlier. Very much share those same, wanting to make sure that our elderly and those who need those parking spaces have access to those. So appreciate the thoughtfulness on the prioritizing those folks. And then the only other thing that I'm interested in hearing about in this process is when we look at expanding Marymore and Overlake potentially for time limits, the impact of the cost to the Diamond contract versus if we just had a meter-made, broadened house. Definitely have heard a lot of complaints about the current process, so just want to weigh what those options would be.
And just to be clear, that is something that we're working on. I don't think, I don't think they're called meter maids anymore, though. Parking enforcement, there we go. Councilmember Sladeen.
Thank you. Really appreciate the presentation. Lots of questions, but I'll keep it to two. One, to emphasize what Councilmember Fields brought up, just specifically to the employees. I know that we often hear about how expensive, expensive it is to live in Redmond, and so many folks come into our city to, you know, work their jobs. The raising price to align with market rates and inflation, I think, as we're reviewing the monthly on-street permits, potentially increasing the number, adding more and prioritizing employees, I would also look to see if there are ways in which, not just for folks that can't afford it necessarily from a low-income perspective, but also looking at employees getting discounts on that, that parking permit. Also, another, really interested in that shared parking downtown pilot, so would love to hear more about that. And then finally, having lived in Marymore Village and parked on the street overnight many nights, because parking in the building was very expensive, I would be really interested to hear about the usage of the Light Rail station or the Light Rail garage. And knowing that there's, what, 1,300, 1,400 parking spots, is that, I mean, maybe you can answer it right now, are those open 24 hours? Like, can you just, can I, can someone leave their car days-on-end?
Not legally.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is, it is open and I think lightly monitored by Sound Transit.
Yeah, would be really interested to hear about that monitoring and how regularly those are, that's enforced. Just knowing that if there's two-hour limits, many people might move their cars from the streets onto, into the, into the garage overnight, so interested in that. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Ms. Chapman, for bringing this forward tonight. In the last couple of months since we've had this report, and as I've had conversations about the downtown parking issue, it's been fun to engage with residents about, take the complaint of the day and then kind of test out, well, what if it was this and what if it was that? And to kind of get their feedback on a few of these things. So actually, my, my starting line is maybe a little bit different than my colleagues when it comes to this change management that we are going to actually undergo. I actually think, I question the order in which we communicate out with the public and be willing to be a bit bold, because change is hard. We know that, time after time after time. So maybe to address some of the concerns of my colleagues, you have this great table, so let's just take the operational management changes for the moment. If we took this table and we added on a couple of columns, maybe one that was addressing who's the target audience of this change? And if we could make all the changes related to employees in downtown all at once? And then if we could make the changes that impact residents who are living outside the centers but visiting the centers? If we could make those all at once? I think, I heard, I hear from residents a little bit of feedback about there's, things are constantly changing. That's true, and they will continue to, especially as we learn and adapt what it's like to live with Light Rail in our community. But I think you have a really great start to this table, and maybe we could add on a couple of things there. Just a couple other comments for, for the, the good of the conversation. I hope that the monthly street, on-street permits could in fact actually be sold to businesses directly, so that businesses could choose to opt into cost-sharing with their employees. And with the shared parking, when we hear more about that, I would love to hear more about the application that's being used. I hope that all property owners and property managers are going to use one shared app. And I very much appreciate the policy direction of this council. For instance, when we considered bringing in multiple vendors for micro-mobility, I'm really glad we just stuck with the one. I'd love us, if we're going to commit to a parking application, let's commit to one. I have six or seven in my phone for the various cities that I visit on a regular basis. So thanks so much for bringing this forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Chapman.
Thanks for being here this evening.
Councilmember Nueva Camina. Very good.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Echoing what my colleagues have already said about the possible cost-sharing when it comes to employees, I think that it, for a lot of the residents, and I say a lot, not all, because we do have a wonderful number of inclusionary housing here in Redmond. But a lot of the residents, because there's such a difference in wages between some that may be living and renting and those that are coming into work and picking up a shift at one of the local restaurants, the cost burden is going to be exponentially higher for that, the shift worker coming in to pick up the shift. I also was wondering, as, as, as I'm listening and I'm looking at the empirical data that we're looking at, then I'm matching that up with the anecdotal as a downtown Redmond resident. And if I am in Bellevue and I'm coming home from work and I just need to swing by and pick up something, how often am I kind of circling around before I can find something? Typically, I'll end up parking at my, at my building, at my apartment, and then walking back. So I'm fortunate to have that, that parking space to go to. But how many are having to circle around and 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 circle around? That to say, for the study session, I would be interested in what are some of the factors that could have the empirical data just not feel that way? You know, is it particular streets that are going to be heavier? Just that we can have that discussion for, for the public that's, that's listening. And also, I know that we're taking a look at, at particular areas. We, we heard it earlier, that there are, there's senior housing in a particular area, there's some affordable housing in another area. Just being mindful that we do have inclusionary housing throughout our city, thankfully. And that, that sometimes, you know, I think when, when my kids were little, and I think about being a single parent and working and trying to juggle everything, how am I going to get everything that I'm juggling from two blocks down the street over to the apartment? And keeping that in mind, again, I think that this is a great problem that we have because it's indicative of the inclusionary housing that we have throughout our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you. In addition to the items that my colleagues have mentioned, specifically around enforcement, the only question I would add would be about some projections with the expected additional units that we're planning on seeing from the PSH project in the Anderson Park District. More, I guess... More, I guess, that can be applied to all the areas we talked about, but just an understanding sort of what the projected growth and what we would see, not necessarily 16 years from now, the next time, like, what are we doing about parking? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and the in-depth analysis and the work on this, and we look forward to seeing more.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next item of business is a staff report on the second quarter 2025 financial report. Kelly Cochran, Finance Director, will introduce this item.
I will try to go as quickly as I can, but please, I will, stop me if you have any questions. Okay, I'm already stuck. Hold on. Why me? There you go. So we are planning to cover the same topics as usual, but we have thrown in some additional information that has been requested. The first is just a reminder of how the timing of our reporting works and where you can find resources in between our quarterly financial reports. So typically, you will see a quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter in the timing of March to April. It really depends on how long it takes us to close out the month. The others come pretty systematically in May, in August, and in November. When council takes a break in August, then we postpone until the first meeting in September. The year-end process can be lengthy, and it can be even more complicated as it has been in the past years, when prior years are still hanging out there or new technology has been implemented. Generally, a month-end close takes us about 10 days after that last day of the month in order to deal with accruals, allocation of interest revenues, transfers, things like that. And then we spend the remainder of the time analyzing the data and working with departments to make sure that we understand what's occurring from their side and if that's actually supposed to be occurring, and work with them to get on the right track if we have any issues. In the meantime, though, on the first Friday of every month, we post a monthly financial report on the city's website. It is a one-page report that will give you high-level information about our revenues, expenditures for the general fund, and then some highlights of some of our other special funds, the same ones that we typically report to you here. So we've still been following, chasing the same risks that we have been aware of since the beginning of the year. We have yet to feel any type of impact here directly at the city. There is indications, though, especially with tariffs being imposed at this time, that we will start to realize that in our capital programs, supplies, fleet, things like that. So we're working across the city to try to quantify what that risk is for the rest of the biennium. The economic factors for the region are changing, but none of them are yet at a critical level. The CPIW metric is, you know, continuing to be in a range that I'm pretty happy to see it in. Anytime it's under 3% feels pretty normal to me. So although we would like to see it go down a little bit more, it does feel like it is in a range that we can manage. The retail sales growth forecast has been decreased again by King County. This is not really what we are seeing in the city for 2025. In a couple of slides, you will see that our sales tax is actually growing, especially the ongoing, mostly because of the information and wholesale sectors. So it's been a positive year for us, although it's been somewhat difficult for other parts of the county. Assessed values are seen, we're seeing those stay really unchanged for the city of Redmond. The most current information is that our average homes are still being valued at $1.4 million, the same as it was a year ago. So helpful information, although it does look like we may be seeing decline in the next year. And employment growth also has been brought down, and we have certainly seen layoffs throughout the city, but we've also seen growth in other businesses or new businesses coming to the city. We've had a lot of growth, multifamily over commercial, and it's really brought a lot of activity into the city. So we are still seeing positive returns on our revenues. So we're looking fairly well. The, as I said, sales tax, it is, it's about one month behind here, so it is looking as though we will end this year with over $51 million in revenue, which is about $6 million more than we had forecasted. Nine million of that being in one time. We had forecasted about $6 million, so very positive returns there. I'm happy to see that development fees are still collecting at the pace or above the pace that we had expected. We're not yet seeing a decline in activity in the city, although that is certainly projected. Grants are looking low, and that's because we have not had any billings yet. We've had one big grant that we budgeted. It was recently accepted by the city, and so we will start billing for that soon. So I think by the end of the year, first quarter next year, that number will be where we want it to be. So really, no concerns with revenues at this time. We were asked to provide some information on some of our new revenues. I've been assured by our fire department that they have turned in all necessary information to begin the EMS transport fees, and we should start to see those collections towards the end of the year or the beginning of next year. I don't believe that we will see any revenues for our speed camera pilot, so I think we will probably set this money aside and wait till that pilot is through, and then we'll see what it is that the city chooses to implement. Utilities taxes on our own utilities through the first quarter is a lower amount than you would expect during the third quarter, which is when we are really seeing a lot of sales of water and cost of the wastewater service associated with that. So this number will right-size itself by the end of the year, and we can expect to collect the second half next year without any problems. The city is going to be receiving an additional revenues for sales tax. This was enacted on July 27th by the state of Washington. They expanded the retail sales and use tax to cover a new set of services. So these services were previously being provided without having to pay sales tax. They are mostly technology and professional services, and they will begin the collection and remittance of that to the city on October 1st. It also includes nicotine provisions. That won't be starting until January. I don't really know what we can expect from that. The part that I do know is that, just based off of the city's share of state sales tax now, we can expect about $2 million annually. I am assuming that we may see higher than that because of the large number of tech and professional service companies that we have here in the city. We also will start paying for sales tax. The risk is really within our IT department. We are currently reviewing their contracts to see if anything, any of them need to be increased in order to absorb the additional sales tax costs, but we don't think that there is significant risk to this biennium, at least on the expenditure side. So we should look at probably netting about $1.7 million to be conservative for this biennium, and then we'll look at how to forecast that for the next biennium. It'll be helpful to offset some of the raising costs that we are seeing. This slide is just to tell you, I know what I know, and I hope to learn more, and I'll let you know. The general fund expenditures are also being managed really well across the city. There are some timing issues that are causing some of them to be overspent, some of them to be underspent. Professional services is one that there is quite a few of these expenditures that are related to service enhancements. So they're one-time in nature, and many of them are not expected to start until 2026. So you, like, World Cup, for example, a lot of the revenue, or a lot of the expenditures are expected in that, and as well as a lot of studies that we have planned. Supplies are a little above the spend rate. This is due to a snow event that we had in February, and we had to replenish public work supplies. They're currently absorbing that. Expect to have their budget looking great by the end of the year. If not, we have contingencies for storms that we can help offset that overage with. This is where, when speaking with council about the $1.4 million that we had identified to move towards our human services fund, this is where that transfer is coming from. We intend to fund that from the savings that we see in salaries and benefits, but because of concerns on the other line items, that's why we're being careful about the spending of that, just not sure really how tariffs may impact things or other risks that we're looking at. Department-wise, all departments are at or under budget. Public Works is right at budget. Again, that's because of supplies. Police is right at budget as well, and that is due to some overtime costs that they are seeing related to record requests, really because of the body-worn cameras. The, we had also been asked to provide some information on how the opioid dollars were being spent. There's been about $35,000 that was used to acquire some equipment for our police department to help, it's a handheld narcotics analyzer. So I guess it analyzes narcotics. Then, a lot of services have been provided funding because what they provide to the community is right in alignment with the intent of those revenue sources. City overtime, you heard a report from Fire today. They, at the committee meeting, they're doing a very good job of managing their budget, looking for solutions, implementing changes, and that work is going well between our departments. Police Department, we are also working with them to help find a way to bring their overtime down or to deal with the records requests that they are seeing from the body-worn cameras. We hope to have this number looking a little bit better in the next coming quarters. So far, all of the departments have been able to absorb the overtime within their salary and benefit costs, so it's not impacting other line items, but of course, we'd like to see it come down. Capital investment program, very happy with how the revenue collection is going here. These returns are really, you know, these are from the second quarter, and we continue to see really good revenues come in for REIT impact fees, connection charges over the summer, so that was great news. The other agencies, that is the transfers that come in from the transportation benefit district, and it's based on the timing of the project's spend. So we haven't started any of those projects yet, but when we do, we'll be transferring money over as it's spent. So no concerns there. On the spending side, we've been a little slow out of the gate. There is a lot of projects going on. They anticipate completing the, around their normal number of projects this year. A lot of the dollars that are budgeted here are related to the MOC, and so that does skew things a little bit. Our business, technology, and investment program, they are on the cusp of delivering some very important projects. Our payroll project is getting close, as well as construction management software for our CIP group. So both of those are going very well. There certainly is challenges, but they're making really good progress. Wastewater and water utility, this is the time of the year where things look a little bleak. Summer months have hit. We had a good summer when it came to revenues, so the underage that you see here has already corrected itself, and you'll see positive results in the third quarter report. When looking at our baseline budget offers, both water and wastewater are showing slightly above the 25% spend rate that we want to be at. Those are due to some administrative or membership fees that they pay upfront in the beginning of the year. Cascade Water Alliance receives a fairly large one, and King County wastewater treatment. The charges in the beginning of the year are much higher than they are towards the end of the year, and so we expect that those will flatten out as we go. In the safe and resilient budget offers, the only concern here is criminal investigations, and that's due to the ordering of some vehicles a little ahead of schedule, and so it's skewing the number a little bit, but also expect that to resolve itself by the end of the year. In strategic and responsive, I think I am the only problem on the page. That's due to the Bomb Cyclone and a number of claims that had been submitted because of damage across the city. I promise to stop spending. And vibrant and connected, all things going very well. As you can see, we're kind of coming to the end of our light rail projects, and so exciting to see great results. Next steps for us, we'll be back on November 18th with the third quarter report. Prior to that, we will spend, we'll be spending, it looks like, a long time with you at a steady session. Many items to introduce to you and hand off for your review. I promise I won't torture you with slide after slide, but I want to make sure that we get some important information shared with you with enough time for you to review it, and then we'll revisit in the beginning of the year. And just wanted to say, I am really excited to share with you the performance report that we've been working with communications to develop. I'm very excited about not only their help, but the direction that we're heading in, so excited to share that with you. Any questions?
Thank you so much, Director. Really appreciate the update. Are there any questions this evening? Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Director Cochran. Really appreciate this overview. I have a couple of questions. Just first, we can get a follow-up on this, but one of the questions we've had the last couple of quarters about the positions funded in the current budget that we hadn't yet seen, we always try to ask about those Sound Transit FTEs, so if we could get an update when.
Absolutely. Yes, sorry about that.
No worries. This report was really helpful, helpful to get your explanation, too, on the new Senate bill. It sounds like we're going to get a revenue that we're mostly going to also pay, so pay out, so that, it's helpful to know. Kind of one of my big overarching questions, and this is for my colleagues just as much as for you, when we prepare for that study session, and particularly the question around HB 2015, I believe it is. My question is related to the positions that the utility tax was intended to fund, and where I believe the council left off on the conversation is, we had a presentation from Chief Lowe regarding the potential partnership at Sound, and perhaps, maybe we didn't need to. to fund alternative crisis response positions. I believe we left that with the subcommittee, so I think it will be important for us to hear from the subcommittee as we consider any new change in a sales tax in November regarding how we fund those positions. I think everyone's tracking with the three factors here that are in this. And just largely, maybe next quarter, something that would be, I would find helpful, and I don't know if my colleagues would agree, is we funded a lot of new positions in this budget in order to generate revenue, so actually the grants, it was helpful to hear our explanation tonight. I actually couldn't remember though, because we don't generally receive these kinds of notices. Have both grants positions been filled, for instance? So if we could see a table or something about just an update on those staffing positions, I think that'd be helpful too.
Great.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Our grant person is just phenomenal. She's wonderful.
Yes, she is. Council President?
Thank you so much. I have one quick question and then another question relevant for our discussion later tonight. One was just for SB 5814, or will those new revenues, can those go into the general fund, or are there any special strings on them?
Nope, they go into the general fund. They just are collected with the rest of our sales tax. We'll receive them the same.
Great, thank you. And so on new business, we'll discuss allocating some funding from the $1.4 million that we had budgeted for the Housing or Community Stability Fund. And so it came up when we were discussing this last week about doing this in terms of understanding where we're at with the rest of those funds. Can you just give us an update on how confident you feel in terms of our ability to make a plan later this year to allocate the rest of what we had?
I think it's important that you make a plan. I, I believe that we will ultimately be able to manage that transfer, but I think we just need to make sure that we understand the impacts of some of the newly imposed policies will have on us.
Okay. But you feel confident with the 250 that's proposed tonight?
I do.
Just whether we'll achieve in terms of the savings that have been projected of $1.4 million?
Yeah, I wouldn't want you to pause on your planning. I think it's important that you don't lose time on that. And I guess I would say that even if there is a challenge to fund the transfer the way that we had intended, I believe that we can find solutions.
Okay. And when do you think we'll have more details on your projections on that?
Third quarter, fourth quarter. I mean, you know, it's, let's check in at the third quarter report.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for our director? Well, thank you so much for sharing all that this evening. Appreciate it. Our next item of business is ombuds report. I think Councilmember Swahudin, did you have anything left from August?
Nothing left from August, but if I can just share one ombuds item, just specifically, a lot of conversations around how we're showing up to support our immigrant refugee communities and a lot of conversations around just the fear of ICE. So reassuring community members that our council is continuing the work to convene our local nonprofits and invest in making sure that we are prioritizing our community here in Redmond and, you know, hopefully making sure that we can keep them safe.
Right, thank you. Councilmember Anderson, you have September.
I do, thank you. And I apologize, I left my council phone at home, so I have about three that will be addressed at the next business meeting. I apologize for that. But I did have a couple of comments. We had some really positive feedback from the Redmond Pride event, so thank you, Axton Burton, for sending those in. It's great to hear positive feedback about that, and congratulations to the city for a well-run event as well. And then an additional follow-up comment with comments on items from the audience from the same individual regarding the police response at that event, based on the Pride Across the Bridge folks. Next, there was a comment, I'm not sure if I mentioned this from the last business meeting, but about the Kroger merger and some concerns about that from a community member. We had a community member write in to us with concerns about changes to bus route 222, specifically by the school, and adding concerns about safety and noise issues. And then finally, I got, I did notice there was some comments from former Mayor Ives regarding the teen center closure, and I'm planning to reply to those and the three others that I missed, and I apologize for not seeing what those are. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other ombuds items? Council Vice President?
I'm going to apologize in advance because I had COVID during the August update, so my update is a bit long. Spoke with a community member that was having trouble getting their trash receptacles from waste management. It took about a month, but they were finally able to get those, and they were very appreciative as they had a newborn. Can't imagine what that was like. Lots of conversations and community members reaching out about the flock cameras and the information that they're seeing coming out of Colorado and Texas and data privacy breach. We will have an update on our flock camera program at our next monthly public safety meeting next month. Community member reached out asking how to get ahold of Tiza on her days off. Had a lot of conversations about inviting people to the East Trail opening, which was this past Friday, and it was fabulous. Conversations with community members about the old Firehouse Teen Center, about the EV bike program that we heard about earlier tonight. Continued concerns from some community members that live by the intersection of 140th and 70th where the new four-way stop was installed, and still seeing people run that stop sign. Great conversations with the owner at Salt and Straw at that opening over the summer, and about how they give back to community. Conversation with a high school student who's a sustainability ambassador and ways that we can explore working together with their sustainability efforts and parks efforts. Conversations around Marymore Transit Parking and the heights entering the building for ADA accessible vehicles. Conversations around Fred Meyer closure and around, conversations around ICE immigration and immigrants and concerns for safety. That was it.
Well done. Councilmember Stewart?
Thanks so much. Had a couple of visitors to my office hours. We discussed the Environmental Sustainability Action Plan update and what the city can do to support residents who are currently facing a lot of uncertainty, given the immigration enforcement that we are seeing. I continue to keep in touch with Redmond workers at Lavish Roots, including a few of the folks we heard from today during items from the audience. I thank my colleagues who also joined in on signing the letter last month. I attended with Councilmember Nueva Camina last week, the Eastside Housing Equity Coalition's second convening around equity practices in housing. This was also attended by folks across the east side, including our Planning Commission Chair, Susan Weston, Ian Leftcourt, Lauren Alpert from our team, as well as staff and commissioners from Kirkland and Bellevue. Really important conversations, and I appreciate the team for putting that conversation together. We've had a lot of events and fun lately, a lot of amazing ribbon cuttings. I'm not sure if Council Vice President Forsyth mentioned that, but we did open the last piece of the Central Connector on Friday. This Friday, at the Overlake Village Station at 12:30, there's going to be a ribbon cutting for the Metro Flex program. So again, that's Overlake Village Station, 12:30 on Friday. Also on Saturday, the City of Redmond is hosting our second gun buyback event. This is part of our gun violence prevention programming this year here at the city. So if you are a Redmond resident or a Redmond Ridge resident this time around, and you have a firearm in your home that you no longer want or cannot properly store, please bring it down to the municipal campus between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. There's more information on our website, and you can receive up to $300 for your firearm. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you. While everyone was cutting the ribbon over at East Trail completion, which was a wonderful, wonderful event, Redmond was the first to have ours completed in that project. I was getting to emcee for Leadership Eastside, the 2025 Mayor's Luncheon, where we had nine mayors that was discussing the importance of cross-collaboration, as well as identifying some of the things that each city is doing very well, as well as what are some of the challenges that we're facing as, as individual cities and how we can work across the way for that. On Saturday, I headed down to Issaquah to attend Salmon on Sunset. Many of us may not know that when the salmon returned back to Issaquah, that means that they've gone all the way from Ballard through Lake Washington, through the Semamish River here in Redmond, through Lake Semamish, and then through Issaquah Creek, making its way to the Fish Hat Tree there. So learning, a deeper understanding of the importance of keeping clean watersheds. And lastly, this one's going to be a little bit longer, I would be absolutely remiss if I didn't mention, and of course, we recognize that today, yesterday started the Hispanic Heritage Month, and that is a time to honor the histories, cultures, and contributions of Hispanic and Latino Americans who have enriched our communities in countless ways. I also want to acknowledge that today is Mexican Independence Day. Much what is currently the United States was actually once Mexico, extending all the way to what is now Southern Oregon. Now, today marks a historic cry for freedom from going back to 1810 that continues to inspire resilience and pride for millions of people of Mexican heritage around the world, including so many here in Redmond. And on this day, we also made history by celebrating a milestone for representation. President Claudia Scheinbaum was elected the first woman president of Mexico, and she delivered El Crito last night from the balcony overlooking the Zoclo in Mexico City before more than over 300,000 people. And as she delivered El Crito last night, her expression carried a fierce grace. It was like a warrior summoning courage and inclusion as she called out Viva Mujeres Indígenas and Viva los Immigrantes, or Long Live the Indigenous Woman and Long Live the Immigrant. And then she softened into a compassion and pride as she overlooked her people. Her leadership marks a new chapter that resonates far beyond national borders. It is a powerful reminder of what is possible when barriers are broken and voices are lifted. But even as we celebrate crop progress, we must recognize the work ahead. For Latinas, who we make up 7% roughly of the United States population, equal payday does not come until October 3rd this year. And that means, on average, Latina women must work nearly 10 extra months into the following year to earn what a white, non-Hispanic man earned the year before. And this is felt even more so for many of us who are self-employed, single mothers. Interestingly enough, what we see is that although that education may increase throughout this, our demographic, the pay does not. So as we honor Hispanic Heritage Month and Mexican Independence Day in this historic moment for women in leadership, let us also recommit to building a city that is a future where every culture is valued, every voice is heard, and equity is not delayed but delivered. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other ombuds items? Yes, Council President?
It's a little hard to follow with that, but thank you so much for, for those reflections and happy Hispanic Heritage Month. So a couple different things. Actually, I'll follow up to note, it is also welcoming week here in the City of Redmond and across the east side, and we, while we didn't actually read the proclamation tonight, you can look out online and be able to read the proclamation. We signed the same proclamation, my understanding is, with all the other cities on the east side, especially focusing on supporting our immigrant, refugee, and asylum seekers within, within Redmond and beyond. And we'll be talking more about that later tonight. I received a couple different emails, one from some Girl Scouts hoping to be able to engage in with local leaders, so excited to go chat with them about public service. Heard some feedback actually on the proposal that's on new business tonight, of some, some feedback of a way to make sure that we can reach all the organizations that, that are serving our immigrant communities. And, and I'll be bringing that, that up a little bit later. I also got some feedback, I think along with the rest of council, of feedback on the ESAP refresh from a resident who provided some ideas in writing, and I'm going to follow up with her as well. Also, we'll just say, the East Trail ribbon cutting was fantastic. It was really so joyous and wonderful, and kudos to everyone who was a part of that. It was really cool to see not only present leaders, but so many leaders all the way back who were there, who've made this happen from the Redmond Central Connector 1 to 3 to now Redmond Central Connector. So cool. I actually, I think I forgot to report this, but I got to cut the ribbon on the Charles, which is a new development, a new apartment building that's up right next to downtown Redmond Park as part of the Hard Hat Happy Hour that was hosted by One Redmond, where people could check out one of our new buildings. And as a reminder, because of our inclusionary zoning, there's some affordable units in there. And then they said, actually, they're already at 70% occupancy and they only, just recently opened, so it was really cool. And had a couple fellow council members with, with me as well. Also got to meet the new owner of, of a new wine business that's in Redmond Town Center, so really a cool community event there. This was a little while back, but I forgot to report on that. And then I'll also note that I spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks working with members of our community on, on the old Firehouse Teen Center, thinking about both the stakeholder group and the focus groups, and talking with our staff, and just making sure that, that council can really get all the community feedback that, that we're hoping for, and that everyone can feel included, get their voice heard, and be a part of this process. I will note that, as, as I think one of our speakers noted, that upcoming is going to be our stakeholder group opportunity, or our, our focus group opportunity. The stakeholder group kicked off this last week, and, and I will say, I was actually, I thought the conversation was really rich amongst the stakeholders. There's really a lot of different perspectives at the table, and that was something that was really important to our subcommittee, was to make sure that we did get a lot of different perspectives, that will get a lot of really deep feedback. And I think a lot of interest in engaging in conversation over the upcoming two months before they'll come back with a recommendation. But one of the things we talked about too, since a lot of people did express interest in being able to engage, is that we'll, we'll find a way for the focus group information to not only go to the stakeholder group for them to think about with their recommendation, but also we'll include the direct feedback from the focus groups to councils, so that way we can consider that when we make our future decision. So as a reminder, those focus groups are going to be coming up on September 22nd and 24th. And those will be really good opportunities for anyone of any interest to be able to weigh in on, on the process and, and on their thoughts around OFH. I will note, we asked at the, at a subcommittee meeting today that the council get information on those two focus groups, so that way you can distribute them amongst your networks. I know the city is going to be putting out on social media, in newsletters, in the upcoming times, so that everyone can know about the opportunity to weigh in on that. And then last, I'll say that I also signed on, I think with several others, on a letter to Kroger, asking them to not close the Fred Meyer in our city, and join in with, with a local union on being able to speak up on behalf of workers in our area. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Could I ask of the committees on the teen center issue? Thank you so much for sending us the information about the focus groups. I did find some information online. If we could also receive a final list of who is on the stakeholder group, I would hate to invite someone to a focus group who is already a member of the stakeholder group, so that could be helpful. Thank you.
Can do.
Great, thank you all. Any, any other ombuds items? All right, are there any committee reports? Council Vice President?
Thank you. Councilmember Nueva Camina and I attended the Disability Board, and we did our standard list of approvals, and we also set policy to expand clarity for non-covered services and supplies.
Thank you. Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. This will be my final update on the AWC Legislative Priorities Committee for 2026. As we have completed our work, I did send the results of the agenda to the council, and next it goes to the board, where Mayor Bernie also represents us. Heads up for AWC City Action Days in Olympia, Lacey slash Lacy will be January 21st and 22nd of the new year. I also attended last week in person the Public Issues Committee, and we only meet in person a couple times a year. Since we did, we toured the Mercer Island Light Rail Station. Super exciting to see a station that is near ready to go, and I'm just really excited for everyone to be able to experience that. We had a couple of briefings, including a really compelling briefing from the King County Library System regarding a potential levy that they are considering for the ballot next year. We are really working at the public-- We are really working at the Public Issues Committee to make sure that folks, like organizations who might need to put something on the ballot, or financing districts who might need to put something on the ballot, to come and speak with the Public Issues Committees when you have questions and rather having all the answers. So it was a great chance for us to weigh in on some of what they're considering. This levy lid lift, it would be the first since 2010 for the library system, and is more than likely needed to maintain services, keep full weekends, add a third weekend, excuse me, weeknight during the week, but also be able to get into some of the circulation services that are so demanded. We actually had some testimony tonight about a very type of service that the library would like to do more of, and that was a direct question that I asked the executive director in the meeting. So things like building on e-bike and scooter programs, baking equipment, other tool libraries, and these kinds of things are also something that they are really interested in pursuing, and the current director has a lot of experience with managing earlier in her career. We also spent time working on a draft letter that we'll continue to revise into the next month. This is a letter to the legislature asking for their support in funding and workforce development to help us all meet the new public defense standards. And once again, I'll just say, I'm really proud of the Public Issues Committee and SCA in their fierce support for the new standard. Now, just how do we get to a solution that works for everyone? One more note that I think is important, and Council President Kritzner may be able to speak more to this, but we learned at the Public Issues Committee that while the board will be putting together a list of a state legislative agenda, they will largely rely on the partners at the Association of Washington Cities this year. And for the first time ever, or the first time in a long time, the Sound Cities Association will actually throw its weight behind a county legislative agenda for 2026. I'm really excited about this. I think we'll learn a ton in the first year of this. Thanks.
Thank you. Other committee reports? Council President.
I don't have a committee report, but I will note that I have an SCA board meeting tomorrow, and we'll be discussing that, so I'll look forward to reporting back after that.
And I have an AWC board meeting starting Thursday, and we will be discussing the legislative agenda as well, as other things. Great. Thank you all. We do, we have no unfinished business, but we do have new business this evening, and we do have an executive session following that, just for everyone watching. The next item on the agenda is new business, AM number 25143, to allocate $250,000 of community stability funding to support immigrants, refugees, and asylum seekers. Generally, how we would do something like this is we'd make a motion and second it, and then we have discussion, so. Council President.
I move to allocate $250,000 of community stability funding to an immediate needs grant round focused on support for our immigrant, refugee, and asylum-seeking community members, with the details as outlined in the memo, with the addition that, in addition to, as mentioned in the memo, I guess I will say, that's maybe I'll make my general motion. All right, as outlined in the memo.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Council President, would you like to share about this item a bit more?
Yes, thank you very much. And yeah, apologies, I was trying to figure out the best way to do this in terms of just one nuance I wanted to add. So as the council can see, this was really, I will say, this was really a priority of our entire council this year, to be able to support our community at this time. As we know, more than 40% of those who live in Redmond were born outside of the U.S., and many more identify as immigrants as well. And we have been hearing from folks throughout our community, a lot of concern throughout this year. One of our initiatives during this year was to be able to meet with the wonderful community-based organizations that work, to be able to support those throughout our very diverse community. And in recent times, the council tasked a couple of us to meet with these organizations, along with having, sharing notes with Mayor Bernie from her engagements with them, to identify what we could do to make a tangible difference for these organizations. As we brought up at study session last week, one of the things that we heard at a meeting on August 1st with many of these groups was that they appreciated some of the things we've been doing to support and our words of support, but that our actions were important, and especially because for most of this year, many of these organizations have been going above and beyond to be able to help community members in need, whether that's with legal service support, or whether that's with providing with housing vouchers or other type of food stability, because people have lost the breadwinner in their family, or are facing other types of instability. And really would love to be able to see us be able to step up and support them in some of these emerging needs. One of the things we discussed was that the needs may vary, and we do want to be able to make, get support to these really great organizations and our community members as soon as possible. So you'll see, the proposed, the proposal that's in here is for our Human Services Department to work with organizations that have been vetted and already granted funding in our last budget through the Human Services Grant Program, as some of the ones that would be considered for this. The one piece that I will add, that I got some feedback on in sending an update about tonight's proposal, that I would just suggest that we give this direction tonight, to go to staff, would be that we also would allow groups that didn't get a human services contract this year to subcontract with some of those organizations, groups, for example, like East Side for All, that may be doing a lot of really great organizing but may not have gotten a human services grant. But they might be able to support, for example, on like a Know Your Rights workshop or other types of educational work. I think that would be a great way to be able to ensure that the full span of groups that are really supporting our immigrant community would be able to do that work. So this would be a one-time funding dispersment in response to unprecedented needs, and it wouldn't be eligible for renewal, so this really would be for what are these emerging needs and costs. And the proposal is that these would have to be exhausted by no later than the end of this biennium, which would be December 31st, 2026. So that means that we're giving, hopefully people will be able to jump in and use this right away, but knowing that sometimes it can take a little bit of time to get money out the door, we'll get them through this upcoming year to be able to spend the money. So I will pause there and say that I'm really excited to hopefully allocate this money and have our Human Services Division jump into action to get that out tonight. Last note, I will say, is that the city of Kirkland passed a very similar allocation two weeks ago, and in the RFP that they've distributed, they actually included language saying that they would include information about, with the city of Redmond, of applicants, since we do combine human services applications, hoping that maybe we would be able to take the lift off of our providers and be able to not have them have to apply to the same thing multiple times. And I understand from talking to our Human Services staff that Kirkland is willing to share the applications that they've gotten, so that if there's an opportunity, we can jump on those as well. And I will pause there.
Thank you so much. I want to make sure any of our other committee or council members that were part of the working on this have a chance to speak before I call on other council members. Councilmember Slahudin.
Yeah, thank you. I'll keep it brief, but I just really want to thank staff for moving really quickly on this and making sure that we could, you know, get it through, especially given the urgent needs. Thank you, Mayor, and to your team as well. I also want to shout out Councilmember Stewart, who's also on the work group, who identified that potential opportunity through the city of Kirkland and urged both Council President and I to explore that option that was taken by our team. And then, the specific need, just want to flag, Council President Kritzner really did mention this, but this funding is, you know, really responding to what we've heard from community. Legal assistance, housing stability, food security, and other needs as a result of current immigration enforcement. And when we're thinking about our priorities as a city, when we're thinking about our priorities as a community and as a region, these are core to what we've established as not only our council, but as a whole community here. So I'm really proud of the work that we've been able to put forward here, and, you know, I wish it was more money.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I think tonight is a win for Team Redmond. It's been since the beginning of the year and even leading into the year, the intent of this council and our partnership with the mayor to be responsive. And I specifically do want to shout out the staff who met with us just a week ago tonight and made this possible. It's been very clear that we've had their strong partnership. As news of these dollars have made it into community this week, I have had many tearful conversations of folks just feeling seen and heard and trusted, most importantly. And so to the organizations who will be using these dollars to serve our Redmond residents right now in their moment of need, we trust you, and I'm so proud to have been a part of this. So thank you so much, Director Helen, and Alaric, and Brooke, and even Deidre for helping us get the memo in at the very last minute there last week. So thank you all, and I look forward to supporting this motion, as well as the additional direction that was identified by the council president.
Thank you. Other comments from council? Councilmember Fields?
At first, I mean, it's, you know, better late than never. I would reiterate what I said last week and what I heard our director of finance say tonight. I hope that the council understands that this work, this need, will continue and likely grow, and that we need to develop a more thoughtful and a more deliberative approach and plan if we're going to continue to use the funds of what we're calling community stabilization. I think it's fine that we've rushed this through. As I said last week, I will support it, but I don't think that we should continue to delay the understanding of what is needed and what we can do. My only other concern, I think I'm getting feedback, is that because my volume is up? Sorry. My only other concern is that we would understand how this money is used, because there will be, we have seen evidence that the federal government is putting limits on how certain public funding can be used, and I think we need to make really clear to ourselves what that, those barriers are and where we don't really want to draw attention to our community partners. So we need to have some criteria in reporting back on how this money was used. I don't know if it's in play, but I certainly encourage it.
Council Vice President?
Thank you. I'm really excited about this opportunity, and thank you to the subcommittee members for bringing this forward. When Councilmember Fields and I met with Director Cochrane last year during the budget process, this is kind of exactly what I had envisioned for a community stability fund, the ability to be nimble, the ability to react when faced with urgent matters that are somewhat outside of our control, very much outside of our control, but the ability to still be here and be able to support our community quickly with funds that we can put to use in a solid, meaningful way. I did express at the time concern about the funding that we cut for legal services, so I'm really excited to see some of this get put forward towards legal services for that community as well. And last week, I had the opportunity to meet with the Executive Director of Central Cultural Real Mexicano and brought up the point that I made last week about the passport cards and potentially using some of this funding to pay for those application fees, so that folks can quote-unquote "carry their papers" and have that piece of paper that proves that they are here legally without having to carry a bulky passport and worry about losing other documentation. So I'm excited about this vote. I hope that other communities will see what we're doing tonight and take the lead as well, and I'm just really proud of us tonight. Thanks.
Any other comments tonight? Councilmember Nueva Camina?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank my colleagues. I was looking forward to being on the subcommittee, as it hits me personally, it hits many of my communities very deeply, and it's, a lot of the community organizations are organizations that I actively participate on a regular basis. So I was disappointed that I had a schedule in conflict and couldn't, and yet I am so proud of the work that was done. I am so proud of, as my colleague, Councilmember Stewart, said, Team Redmond, that we are steadfast in the city's values. We spent time to identify what they are, and that we continue, pardon me, to take steps to walk that out through integrity. So thank you for, to the subcommittee, and thank you to the staff. Again, plus one to much of what was already said with how nimble that we were able, how quickly we were able to respond. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? Council President?
I'll just note that I saw in the chat, I just wanted to read, that Director Helen messaged me to say that they will include within reaching out to organizations, if this passes tonight, the ability to subcontract. So just wanted to share that confirmation. Also, just wanted to give my extra thanks to Director Helen, Brooke, and Alaric, on her team and everyone for that, this work in advance. And to note that I hope that we'll be able to hear back soon, as soon as this does get distributed, report back to council on the different grants that go out, and hopefully we'll be hearing them directly from those organizations.
Thank you so much. I see no other comments on this item. This will be a roll call vote, starting with Council President Kritzner.
Aye.
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 That passes 7-0. Thank you all very much. Look forward to seeing how we can help our community. The last item on the agenda is an executive session to consider the selection of a site or the acquisition of real estate by lease or purchase, RCW 4230-1101B. Action will not be taken following the executive session, and the meeting will adjourn at, let me give us a couple of minutes to get there, at 9:50. Per state law, the executive session is closed to the public. Executive session participants attending remotely, please leave this meeting and join the executive session teams meeting. All of us that are on the teams meeting here, can we leave that as well, so we're not doing both? And we will have no business before, we will be adjourned after the executive session.